We'll now call this workshop the Jacksonville City Council's order. The council, you have before you a copy and proposed agenda for the workshop this evening and I would entertain a motion at this time to adopt the agenda.
So move.
Second, any discussion? With no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Right, at this time we have a, the auditor is going to present a statement of the auditing standards to us and turn over to you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, while we're just in the process of adopting the budget, we're also in the process of closing out a fiscal year. What that means is that your auditors are coming to town. Now, this is not like December 25th when you look forward to Santa Claus coming to town, but Andrew and his staff do an excellent job for us. As you know, at one time they were McGadrey and probably before that some other name. Now they are RSM. And part of the process is that they are required to give you a statement of auditing standards. And what Andrew Brothers would like to do tonight is to give you that statement of auditing standards. Before he begins, I'll ask Gail if she has other comments.
No, this is just a letter that we usually email out to you all that he wanted to come tonight and speak to you about it and give you information to contact him if necessary.
All right. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and the council members again this year for letting us be service to the city of Jacksonville. So, thank you guys. Each of you should have the SAS 114 letter, we like to refer to it as. And this, basically this letter addresses the timing and scope of the audit and is required by auditing standards that we present this letter to the board each year. So, I'm gonna just go over a couple areas. First is communication. We want you guys to know that you, the council members and the mayor can directly communicate to us with questions. You don't have to go through management. You can communicate directly through us. Gail or Alan have my contact information or, you know, give you a business card or whatnot, but any questions, you guys can come right to us. Second, I want you guys to know that we are an independent third party to Jacksonville and our personnel have to comply with professional independent standards. Next is the timing of the audit. Preliminary field work's gonna start actually tomorrow and that will carry into Tuesday of next week if need be. And during the preliminary field work, that's where we come out here and we update our understanding of Jacksonville and the internal controls in place. And we'll come out and we'll perform walkthroughs such as inquiries, observations with the different personnels, personnel of the different transaction cycles, whether it be cash, debt, revenue, accounts payable, fixed assets, payroll, operating expenses. We'll just, we get familiar with the different understanding of those controls. Also during the preliminary field work phase, we'll also perform compliance testing and we'll look at your grants funds you've received this year and make sure that that money was spent in according, accordingly to the grant requirements. Make sure that those funds comply. And then, final field work, that's gonna commence on August 21st and usually runs week, week and a half and we'll come back the second week and we do, we dive into TDA. But during this time, during final field work, this is where we look at the actual account balances and test those account balances that make up your financial statements. And we'll either perform third-party confirmations, analytics, test the details, test the support around them to make sure that those numbers that make up your financial statements are accurate, complete, valid, reasonable. But this is what we do during the final field work prior to the, Gail and her team writing the CAFRA. So that's, that's all I'm gonna cover with the SAS 114 letter. And I'm gonna now open it up for any questions you guys may have for, for us.
Counsel, any questions regarding the audit?
Mayor and counsel, as part of the package that Andrew's giving to you, there's a LGC contract to audit accounts. And this document needs to be approved by council this evening as it says in bold print on page four of eight, the audit should not be started before the contract is approved. So, Mayor, appropriate time if you entertain a motion to approve the contract if there's questions. Andrew or one of us will try to address those.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract to audit as presented.
Motion second. Discussion.
Does it stay in the audit how much they're charging us?
Yes, sir, on page five, I believe.
Page five.
Five of eight.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
That seems very reasonable to me. I don't know what we pay it, our advice, this is ridiculous.
Discussion hearing now, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming and being with us tonight.
Thank you, guys.
Who's gonna give the DSERP presentation? Is it here?
On page five of eight, the 75 percent cap of the embourse.
I think that's 75 of the 43, 200. At a certain point, they get to the time to run receive that money.
Second thing on your agenda this evening is to receive a brief overview of the base area environmental study which has been going on for a number of years. I apologize for not knowing the young lady sitting next to me, so I'm gonna let her introduce herself. And at this time, we will turn the floor over to you for this overview.
Thank you, sir. My name is Susan Cullen. I'm the coordinator for the Defense Coastal Estuary Research Program. You look confused already and I've just started. The Defense Coastal Estuary Research Program.
I saw some guys one day.
Oh, you did? At Marine Corps Base Camp Lejeune. And I want to thank you for your time. I saw your schedule printed in the Jacksonville Daily News yesterday, so I know it is quite full. We are entering our 10th and final year of research and monitoring at Camp Lejeune. And we're spending the majority of this last year engaging end-users as stakeholders and we consider the Jacksonville city to be one of our most important end-users. So we really enjoy opportunities like this. So again, thank you for your time. I'll probably be about 15 minutes. I think your structure is usually to save questions till the end, but I, I always welcome questions. If there's a moment of confusion, I've tried to keep it relatively simple. We'll see how successful. Thank you. So I'm going to give you the 30,000-foot view at first, give you the big DOD context. Why is DOD doing research at installations? How did we even get to Camp Lejeune? I will use DSERP repeatedly for the Defense Coastal Estuary Research Program. I work for the Navy. I'm required to use acronyms at every opportunity possible. So at Marine Corps Base Camp Lejeune, MCBCL. But I want to really get to that local level of usefulness and that's the whats in it for us. You may find the first two questions interesting, but it's really the third question that's most relevant to this group here today. It doesn't matter where I point it. So why do environmental research at a DOD installation? These figures are really to make the point in and of itself. In order to support the military mission of training and readiness, DOD uses expansive amounts of land, air, and sea. And they're required to manage those lands to support that mission, to provide a broad array of training environments for men and women that we are sending to the theater. We have an obligation to them. But we're federal landholders and we also have an obligation to do sound stewardship on our lands and to comply with environmental regulations. Excuse me, my allergies are also right up there. I think these numbers are a testament to a few things and that's why I particularly put the number of federally listed species and species at risk up there. It's a testament to the fact that military training really is compatible with sound ecosystem management. There are clearly instances where military training is disruptive to an ecosystem function, but for the most part, that has not been my experience. I've been at Camp Lejeune for 10 years running this program. Prior to that, I worked for the U.S. Forest Service doing my own independent research at Camp Lejeune, so I have over 15 years' experience there. And I really have come to the opinion that these uses are very compatible. And in fact, sound resource management really enhances our ability to support our troops. I think it's also a testament to the sound, the sound management being done by professionals at the installation. So I always like to give them an attaboy and remind everybody that they're doing an amazing job. So that's why DOD is interested in managing resources and they're interested in the science that informs that management. Management just doesn't come out of thin air. Ideas that we implement come from many years of science and study. So that's DOD's interest. But not only do they have to manage lands in and of themselves, they're faced with constant pressures. And these pressures are not unique to DOD. They may be more intense and larger in scale in some instances, but they really are common to everybody that has anything to do with natural resources. So development pressures in surrounding areas, encroachment is a huge issue, requirements for compliance, of course, with environmental regulations. And then this thing called impairments, and I consider these stressors to natural systems. These are things that challenge natural systems to be resilient and to function in ways that we've expected them to function, to continue to supply us with services. And I'll give you some examples of those. So these are some of the stressors that I selected just as a quick, quick examples of things. We have natural stressors, hurricanes, high tides in the spring that cause nuisance flooding, flooding associated with nor'easters. Natural stressors are a constant concern. But then we have man-made stressors, whether they're military or non-military. Obviously, the military ones tend to be restricted to within the base confines. We have things like noise that extend outside the base, but in general, those are restricted to the installation themselves. But these other man-made stressors, things like wastewater treatment plants, confined animal feeding operations, agricultural runoff, suburban sprawl, these are ubiquitous to communities and they are a constant challenge. And then the last category of stressors that DSERP takes into consideration in their research are legacy stressors. And that's that photo on the bottom left, that's the intracoastal waterway. And you may not know this, but between 1938 and 2004, the waterway doubled its width. This was not intentional, this was a consequence of management. So we often don't even think of the waterway as a stressor. It's such a big part of our environment. We see it all the time in our recreation and our commercial fisheries. We almost don't even think of it as being not natural, but it isn't natural. And this widening, this 60 meters of widening over the last 60 some-odd years has eaten away at lands on both sides of the waterway. It's a challenge to barrier islands, Topsil Island and Anzlo Island experienced that all the time, eats away at that shoreline. But it's also a stressor to the upland side, to those marshes. Those marshes are primary nursery areas for important fisheries. They mitigate storm energy to infrastructure, they prevent saltwater intrusion to our uplands. So we come to this point where we ask, when does this stressor start to compromise the ability of these ecosystems to provide these functions? It's a big question, right? These are big questions. And we spent the last 10 years trying to get at some of these things. And the intracoastal waterway's been one area of focus for us, particularly considering the importance of Anzlo Beach to the amphibious training military mission at Camp Lejeune.
And how did it widen? Had it, was it conscious effort by, for navigation or natural?
It tends to be a combination of a few things. One is consistent wave action from boats. And we've actually measured that wave energy. But it's hard to suggest an awake zone the entire length of the intracoastal waterway. There may be select places that are more sensitive that we think about that in the future, but that's one way. And the other real cause is the constant dredging. So the very thing we do to maintain it is causing this slumping off of the sides all the time. And this is a tremendous widening over 60 years. And if you're doing land planning for the next 10, 20, 50, 100 years, this is something you may want to think about.
Is one of the things that you looked at, seawater level rise? Is that something?
Absolutely. We are looking at the resiliency of those marshes and their ability to keep pace with sea level rise. And I'm gonna talk about that in just a little bit. So, DOD's interested in management, they're interested in the science that feeds the management, but how do they address it? SURDEP, another acronym for you, Strategic Environmental Research and Development Program, is DOD's premier science, excuse me, and technology program. Yeah, I should be okay. Yes, sir, thank you very much. They invest in a broad range of natural and infrastructure challenges, everything from studying the permafrost loss in Alaska to increasing wildfires and threatening DOD training in those environments to our Pacific installations. And we're really focused on sea level rise there. Saltwater intrusion to available drinking water and the effect of some of these islands that are maybe a meter above sea level at this time. So we are funded through SURDEP. DSERP is funded through SURDEP to do research at Marine Corps Base Camp Lejeune. And we are a congressionally authorized program since 1990 and we administer the program with cooperation with the Department of Energy and the Environmental Protection Agency. So I have very little expectation that you will look at this graph and embrace it and want to copy for your office walls, but it's really just to make a few points. Usually, research programs face one issue and tackle that issue and usually come up with a good response. And that is a perfectly fine approach. But DSERP is a little bit of an experiment in and of itself in that we're 10 years and we are highly integrated. This is our conceptual model, believe it or not. This is where we started. What do we know about the ecosystems on Camp Lejeune? How do we know how they're connected? What are the inputs to them? What are the exports out of them? And what are the stressors? And the size of the arrows are related to the magnitude of that stressor. So forget all the details, but it's a very complex coastal ecosystem we're looking at and we're not approaching it one problem at a time. We're really taking a landscape approach. And the information in the blue box is just to give you an idea of exactly how large this program is. We work in these ecosystem types primarily and they are separated on the slide, but they are not separated in the way we approach our work. My personal, near and dear to my heart is the longleaf pine forest in the uplands of Marine Corps Base Camp Lejeune. They are abundant there as well as across Anzlo County. We work on Anzlo Beach. It is a critical amphibious training resource for the Marine Corps and additional to providing habitat for a number of species. Coastal wetlands, we've talked a little bit about the importance of their resiliency, excuse me. And then the New River, the tributary creeks, and the estuary. And I'd like to just make sure we're all talking about the same thing when I say the New River versus the estuary, excuse me. The New River begins in northern Anzlo County and it is maybe two feet wide at its headwaters. By the time it flows through the entire watershed and reaches Jacksonville, it has taken in every nutrient and sediment from that watershed and it loads it into the New River estuary, which begins where the fresh water from the river meets the saltwater that comes up through the inlet. That's where the estuary begins and it is primarily surrounded by Camp Lejeune and it ends at the New River inlet, of course. So when I refer to something as off-base, I'm generally referring to the upper watershed to include all of Anzlo County and the city of Jacksonville. And then when I refer to on-base, it's primarily the lands that surround the estuary. Just in the following slides, that will probably become a little bit more important to you. So this is the big question, whats in it for us? And I think after 10 years and the amount of data and information we have, there is something in this program for everybody. While DOD is our prime end-user, we are there to support DOD's mission, it would be selling ourselves short to think that this data doesn't have meaning to all kinds of people in all different kinds of way. So whether you are going to directly use the data or you're going to simply make a link between your research and our research, if you're a natural resource specialist in the area, and you glean information, that's a good use. Maybe we just encourage folks to think about things in a different way. Maybe folks see 10 years of monitoring and realize what kind of power that amount of information translates into. Maybe that's what they glean from the program. And just a quick shout-out, the figure on the right, the woman in the blue tee-shirt and the shorts standing at the end of that city of Jacksonville pontoon boat, I think that's the old one, actually, I think they have a new one now, is Pat Donovan Potts with Stormwater. I've had the pleasure of working with her for the last 10 years and it's been a real pleasure. But she, in cooperation with several DSERP researchers, Mike Peeler, Dr. Mike Peeler from the Institute of Marine Science, UNC Chapel Hill in Morehead City, and Dr. Carolyn Curran from NOAA, and Jennifer Thornton from the NOAA North Carolina Sentinel Site Program, all collaborated and have C-grant funding now and are pursuing additional work in Wilson Bay, looking at water quality and the resiliency of marshes. We are going to measure those marshes long-term and see, are they keeping pace? Are they changing? And are they providing the services that we hope they're still providing? And now, because of this work, Wilson Bay is in what we call the Surface Elevation Table Network. This is a network run by NOAA, it goes back decades. There are 77 sites across the coast of North Carolina that are measuring marsh health. And Wilson Bay actually represents the most inland site that they have, so it was a wonderful addition to this long-term program. So kudos to Jacksonville and to the DSERP researchers on the team for getting together and finding this additional way to collaborate. So don't be alarmed, I'm gonna walk you through this and I see it's gotten a little skewed, but that is absolutely okay. So this is an example of the direct data we have that may be useful to you. We have developed, we, being DSERP, has developed an estuary simulation model. It was actually developed by Dr. Mark Brush out of the Virginia Institute of Marine Science, College of William and Mary. And it is a simulation model that uses measurements and simulations to understand the response of the estuary to inputs from the New River. So how does what's coming in from the New River affect the estuary? So the first thing I'll point to is the small map. And that's just to show you off-base is the red, that's upper Anzlo County and the city of Jacksonville. The blue water is the estuary and it's surrounded by the installation. So that's just to clarify for the rest of what you'll hear. So when we take years' worth of data and use simulations and modeling, we have estimated that the sources to the New River of nitrogen, a significant nutrient that can affect water quality, the majority is coming from off-base. 64 percent. And then we have parsed out the portions from on-base to be more specific to them, whether it's the wastewater treatment plant, atmospheric deposition, because we know nitrogen comes in through rainfall, whether it's from Anzlo Bay, that's nitrogen that comes in through the inlet, or whether it's from our tributaries. So that's an interesting piece of information. And I don't think it's really a surprise, but I haven't seen anyone put a number to it in all of my research, looking at information going back decades in this region. So the two bottom graphs are really a different representation of the same type of information. So I will set this up for you a little bit. Chlorophyll A, both graphs on the bottom, the left and the right deal with chlorophyll A. This is a major water quality indicator that is monitored by the state. And 40 is the magic number. So if you look on the Y-axis, we have 0, 40, 80, 120. That's the amount of chlorophyll A in the estuary. Across the X-axis are just years, 2007 to 2011. Looking at just the graph on the left, the blue line represents how much chlorophyll A is in the estuary today with all sources. So remember, this is a water quality indicator, we want to keep it around 40, there's clearly spikes in variation. And these are all sources. When we remove off-base sources of loading, so the only sources, and this isn't just nitrogen, this is all nutrients. When we remove those nutrients, chlorophyll A reacts dramatically. That's the red line. So the blue line on the left are current conditions, current amounts of chlorophyll A from all sources. When I remove the off-base source, the resulting chlorophyll A response is the red line. It's a dramatic reduction. On the right side, you almost can't see the blue line, which represents current conditions because it's behind the red line. And in this case, the red line represents what happens when I remove on-base sources. So the only sources are now off the base. So I'm setting up two different scenarios, when I remove nutrient loading from on the base and when I remove nutrient loading from off the base. When I remove nutrient loading that originates on Marine Corps Base Camp Lejeune and just leave off-base, there is almost no response to water quality. So that points to where the stressor is coming from. If you know where something is happening, then you can proactively do something about it. And that's what this information's all about. It's about taking information, turning it into knowledge, and then giving you more flexibility to take actions in the future regarding any issues that we may be addressing in DSERP. So this is just one example of the type of data that we have that may be relevant to the city of Jacksonville as well as the county.
Will you leave that? Could you go back one second?
Absolutely.
The red line on the chart on the left is a theoretic line?
Exactly. That's exactly right.
Because obviously, it hasn't been removed.
Exactly.
So what you're saying is if, if government regulations or resulted in certain nutrients being removed, you would see water quality come down to the red line?
We would expect to see a reduction. And I should have mentioned this, so I'm glad you asked me because it prompted my memory, that this model is available online. It is publicly available and it is web-based and we have an amazing user interface. It is specifically designed for non-specialists to be able to run. So you can put in any scenario you want. You can increase the temperature under uncertain climate futures, you can increase or decrease loading from any number of sources, and the model will give you a simulation and tell you what it thinks is gonna happen. It also gives you uncertainty. It tells you how certain we are. And these models go through rigorous validation. So while there's always uncertainty in trying to predict the future, we've done the best, I think, we could to provide some interesting information about likely future outcomes given certain scenarios.
Thank you.
So we have a website. You can find not only those types of results, but you can find story maps, which are really nice introductory ways to understand what we're doing. You can find maps. Our actual raw data is open and publicly available. We will give everything we have essentially to anybody who wants it and wants to use it. And we will assist them in interpreting and using this data if they feel like they need some assistance. We have a large team and part of their role is to engage in end-user satisfaction with understanding how to use this data. So DSERP should be completely burnt into your memories by now and it's all you have to do is Google DSERP and you'll find all of our contact information and just a whole variety of different kinds of information that you may find useful. So that's one way to get to other information. There's always through me. I'm always happy to come talk about a very specific topic to any group or organization. And the other way, we hope you all will join us on Thursday. We'll be at the Jacksonville Youth Center from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. While we would love to have you all day chewing on science and management and all kinds of interesting things, we'll take you for 20 minutes. You know, stop by, have a cup of coffee with us after lunch, engage with some of our researchers and see what they're working on, and you might just make a connection that is somewhat unexpected. These are the topics we're going to generally be talking about and I think I very briefly touched on them today and we get a little bit more specific in these titles. For example, we research fire a lot. And fire is a huge issue for managing our force in this part of the country. So we're gonna address all, just a host of variety of interesting things that I think have real pertinence to the group here. And my email, of course, is posted there, is now posted to all of Jacksonville, which I'm not sure I anticipated when I put it up there, but that is fine. And of course, our website is also posted there. And that's really all I have for you today.
Any questions?
Please.
Colin, I don't know if you're studying, and I guess it's pointing my question, does it take in the effects of groundwater and saltwater intrusion? And I'm thinking in particular of the study, of the program the city, Onwasa, and the base are involved in in terms of groundwater modeling program.
We do not participate in that. We're aware of it, but we feel like that, that's not our role.
Separate animal?
Yeah, exactly.
About sea level rise, what are you, what have you measured or what are you observing? What are you, what are you seeing?
We have an entire climate change group and they are out of the North Carolina University Climate Office. The director of the climate office for that is Ryan Boils and he is leading that group. They have done a few things. The first thing they've done is put together climate histories to get a really good understanding of what's gone on through the decades, through the past. You'd think that'd be readily available, but shockingly, it really isn't. So the first thing they've done is put climate histories together so we understand where we're coming from and where we stand today. The next thing they're doing is they are taking ensemble models and they are putting them all together and they are downscaling them to our regional area and they are projecting what they anticipate are potential climate futures. And I unfortunately did not include that table because I thought it might be a little bit much, but we do have very specific information on what we anticipate and we divided it into decades, what will be happening in the next 20 years, 30 years, 40 years, 50 years, through the year 2100. In general, without having the table in front of me, the majority of factors we look at, temperature and rainfall events, the severity of rainfall events and how rainfall is delivered, we cannot detect a change in future climate in the next 20 years that is different from our current climate. And part of that is because of the huge variation we have in our natural weather. And weather's all over the place. We do start to see significant changes after 20 more years. So about 2040, we start to see temperature rise to a degree that it starts impacting waterways and we see rain being delivered in different quantities and in different patterns that also may affect things like stormwater. If you have the same amount of rain throughout the year, but it's delivered in fewer severe events, you may have a stormwater problem on your hands. The other thing we're looking at for, with regards to the installation are things like black flag days. You know, there's a limit to the training that can be done under certain environmental conditions, and they may be challenged to shift their training a little bit from the middle of the day on a regular basis. So, we are looking at those climate futures, and it is on our website, and we're also looking at how we expect these marshes to sustain. The majority of marshes at Camp Lejeune are currently keeping pace with sea level rise. We measure accretion on a millimeter scale of sediment in the marshes, and we do feel like they will keep pace, but by 2100, many of the marshes start to drown. So, it's what we're looking at now, are techniques to shore up the marshes. And one thing we're examining is thin-layer disposal, and that's being done by Carolyn Curran with NOAA, and it is the application of dredge spoil onto marshes. Rather than dumping it on dredge islands, can we do a thin-layer application of that spoil in the marshes to increase what we call their elevation capital? Can we get them high enough up where they will not drown over time and continue to function? And it's not unprecedented work in the country, but it is somewhat unprecedented for this part of the county.
You mentioned you were aware of the water table studies that's going on. How about flood maps? Are you, have you had any interaction with the recent flood maps that were, that are made available?
The recent ones that are changing the status and category of many homes in the area?
Yeah, and it certainly is gonna affect Camp Lejeune. I mean, if it's gonna affect Jacksonville, it's gonna affect Camp Lejeune.
It certainly will. So, we haven't looked at it from a perspective of residential, because that's really not our primary concern, but we are looking at it from which ecosystems may be impacted. Camp Lejeune actually has quite a bit of elevation up to their shoreline. They're really quite lucky. I'd say we're probably most concerned about Anzlo Beach. There's been dramatic erosion at the southern end of that beach in the last many years, and we have shown erosion patterns going back to its earliest 1850, and now we are going to project them out in the future with our climate projections, looking at different storm patterns and storm events. There's a great product that you can actually get to from our Dserp website, and that's the NOAA flood maps dealing with sea level rise, and they're excellent, and we use those as well. We don't see any need to reinvent the wheel, that's for sure, so I would highly recommend taking a look at those also, under different sea level rise scenarios.
Are you speaking of the south end of Anzlo Beach? You're talking about the south of the inlet?
No. So, Anzlo Island is north of the New River Inland. It is the barrier island just north of Topsail, and it's about eight miles long, and the bottom half of that island is just experiencing tremendous erosion. And part of that erosion is occurring on the amphibious training beach. So, we're working very close with the trainers to really understand what we think the future shoreline of that beach is gonna look like, and what opportunities for training it will continue to support.
There've been talks about jetties in the inlet.
I know Topsail Island has spoken about jetties, and I probably won't comment on But we have looked at alternatives for Camp Lejeune, and one of those alternatives is renourishment, and we have done some offshore work with the Army Corps of Engineer, the office out of Duck. Dr. Jesse McNinch is on our team, and he has examined the sand sources off Anzlo Island, and I think it's very similar to the situation off Topsail Island, which is there is not a good sand source off of Anzlo Island to make renourishment really a viable economical alternative.
Obviously, quite impressive study. What happens to the study? Who adopts it, or is it just a reference for the community and the base?
Well, that's a complicated question, actually. The program itself stops. Our resources, such as our public website, our database, our tools, will remain publicly available for a period of time, and we think that period of time represents the amount of time that they are useful without additional data being collected. You know, information's only good as its data, and as conditions may change, whether it's, we pass this message on to the base a lot. The findings we have are for today. If you change what you do, our findings are not as relevant. You must continue to monitor these situations to be able to make these findings relevant. But many of our tools will be available indefinitely. We hope people will gather the information they want and host it themselves, and our data is always available through the SIRDEP, our funder, through their website as well. We hope Camp Lejeune is gonna continue a good portion of this work in a much scaled-down version.
Excellent. Thank you all.
Appreciate that.
Mayor, members of council, the last several weeks, we've had the opportunity to go through a series of workshops relative to the budget. You will notice, obviously, May 16th is tonight. Potential adoption is not on your agenda. Currently, the potential adoption may be on June the 6th. The budget workshop this evening, as you can see, I changed that to potential adoption. I thought I had a slide in there that said that. Thanks, John. The only topic that we are aware of that you have not come to a consensus on is the topic of compensation adjustments for the employees. I did learn through conversation with one of the county commissioners yesterday while I was attending the dedication of the Dr. Ken Morgan and Mary Morgan Dental Clinic for Anzlo Community Outreach, that the Anzlo County is going to do a 2.6 percent. Onwassa is still talking about an adjusted CPI. Of course, the school system, that is to be determined. You will recall the history that we have provided you. You've done a variety of things. We also showed you the effect that last year, when you did a $1,000 across the board, I would draw your attention to the numbers, that as you look on the left side, you can see the percent that a $1,000 increase gives. In the second column, the number of employees, and the right column, you can certainly see that through what you did last year, 80.9 percent received a 2 percent or greater increase. I would also show you the salary impact, because obviously, if an increase is passed along, the money must come from one of these funds. And of the 560 employees, not all are funded by the general fund, as you know. At this point, though, the management, if you pardon the legal term, we rest our case on the budget. We thank you for your direction and attention, and we will turn it over to you for whatever direction you decide.
One quick question here. Onzlo County, you show a 2.6 percent CPI increase. Are they facing the same insurance problems that we are, as far as increased premiums?
I do not know that, Mayor. I'd be happy to find out. I have not heard that they are, but that doesn't mean... Actually, Mike, you cover it. Are they, what are you hearing?
They have been, they made no mention about that, and they were, I just spoke to Chairman Wright this afternoon, that county wage adjustment is a moving target for serious work, but you're pretty close with that number.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Protim, is on. Mayor, thank you. I guess I'll lead it off. I apologize for not being able to be here at our last meeting when this was up for discussion, but I did get a chance to watch it in full and read all the documentation and the research that was brought forward, and my recommendation, after a lot of thought, is, I'm a proponent of a percentage, so I would like to propose a percentage of 1.5 percent, plus the monies that we put in for the health premiums, really equates to a little bit over 2 percent, which I think is appropriate. The reasoning for that for me is that while we did 1,000 last year, and it actually, you know, for all the right reasons, it had good impacts, but I think we're creating more of a compression issue amongst some of the salary ranges within the organization. I mean, years ago, we had very severe issues with salary ranges, and even today, throughout some of the departments, we're losing good valuable employees to other entities because of salary ranges, and I think we can't neglect that. I think when you go across the board, you don't obviously eliminate that, but you don't make it worse. And so, that is my proposal for today. I think it's a fair proposal on both sides. We can do a 1.5 across the board, and if you consider what we're having to put in for the health premiums assistance, you're about 2.2 percent of an increase across the board, because we're having to put that money in, which basically supplements the health insurance program, which is an entitlement for our employees or a benefit. So, I'd like to open that up for discussion if possible, or a proposal as a motion.
Well, I would like to add that now that we're considering eliminating the, I think it's the 1,250 deductible, and we're moving to the 1,750 deductible, my biggest concern is with the, with our staff that would be at the mere bottom of the pay scale. Actually, as a matter of fact, Mayor Protim, I support your motion, because when I'm looking at it and I'm thinking about the $1,000 and looking at the category, when you think about those employees who are at the lower end of the pay scale, more often than not, there is very little room for career advancement. There's not a lot of education in which that person has to ascertain in order to hold that position. Oftentimes, there's little respect, little recognition, and when I think about $1,000, and by the time you take away taxes, let's just say, for example, you have $700 that's left, well, now these individuals are looking at a increase of almost, what is it, 598 in terms of their deductible?
In the worst case, it would be if they had family.
Yeah, so basically, that $1,000 basically is just gone for that particular group of individuals, and we've had a conversation around this table for many of years that we've talked about wanting to do what's best for our employees. Even Dr. Woodruff gave an example during our meeting last week, that there has been an occasion where we have a valuable employee that we do not want to lose, and to keep that particular employee from being enticed by another municipality, that oftentimes, there is a counteroffer in order to keep that individual. And so, we all know with the stresses and strains that comes with running a government, what municipalities is facing, but by the same token, it can't run on a skeleton crew. We, at some point, have to admire and also reward our employees, not just with lip service, but it's financial service, and believe it or not, these employees have problems and issues, just like we have problems and issues, and we have to be able to find that balance. How do we continue to not only keep our employees that we have now, but what happens when those employees get ready to retire? How do we then attract a workforce that would want to come and work for the city of Jacksonville and be proud, as opposed to it becoming a revolving door to the point that we cannot keep our employees? And you have to be able to pay your employees if you want efficiency, if you want effectiveness, because it's starting to become a doggy-dog world, and whoever can be the highest bidder is the one that's going to attract those employees. So, what can we do as a city, as a municipality, to not only maintain the workforce that we have, but also to attract others to come in, because I'm sure that our workforce is getting older, whether it's through attrition, whether it's through moving of our employees because they're going on to bigger things, or whatever the case scenario is, fill in the blank, we have to be able to be a competitive employer, and...
Well, and the thing too, is the $1,000 is non-reoccurring.
No, it recurs.
That's how it was set up, as a... So, this year would be the same $1,000?
It was not a bonus, it was a bump.
For example?
Oh, a bump in their, it was a salary bump.
That's right. So, if a person was making $30,000, they became $31,000.
That makes it even better, but again, you know, you're absolutely right in everything you're saying.
So, I would like to second your motion.
To clarify for all of us, that was a 2.2 percent?
Well, it was a 1.5 plus the funds that were allocated for the health insurance, which...
It's already been done.
It's already been done. It's in the budget, but again, I heard your comments last time, and that is a number that has to be considered, because we're adding that.
That's additional cost of compensation.
As part of additional cost of compensation.
Would you put the thing back up there with the percent?
I think, Mike, I don't understand how you feel that. A fixed...
This one, sir.
No. Where was 1 percent?
It's back. I think it's the other.
1 percent.
Yeah, it's that.
Okay, let's do it. Let's go off. Okay.
Go ahead, Randy.
Now, this is... How you feel that a fixed increase for every employee impacts compression?
Well, you're not making it worse, is what my comments were. You have a compression issue that hasn't been fully dealt with.
Well, I don't see how this... I don't see how this amount affects. That seems...
You decreased the percentage between them.
Okay, I just take compression as getting closer.
No, I mean, you're decreasing.
But if everybody's moving at the same...
You're decreasing percentage.
Yeah, and we already have an issue that we haven't fully dealt with, and we're losing good quality people. You talk to Chief Nera, you talk to some of the department heads, it's something that we can't just neglect. Obviously, there is an impact with it, and what Angela's talking about is something we have to consider. Do you want to be the training ground for other government entities, or do you want to train and retain and build the value? And again, if you're not competitive in your salary ranges, you become a training ground, where you spend the money to hire and train, and then they leave to go make more money somewhere else and give their experience.
I don't understand, I don't understand how a percentage increase is better for...
Because it's fair across the board. Again, last year, when you did your $1,000, you know, again, you look at percentages, you're really, you're not being fair across the board, across your salary.
You're not giving an equal percentage.
You're not equal, you're not giving equal percentage, and I don't think that's right.
But that's not saying it's fair. You're defining fair in your own mind.
Well, I mean, I don't think it's right. I think it did what it needed to do last year, but I don't think you should keep doing that, because I don't think it's right across the board. You're penalizing your middle management and your upper management. They're not getting their fair, equal share, and I don't think that's right.
Actually, you and Angie are saying different things.
Yeah, because when you talked about trying to help the people at the bottom, this helps them the least. I mean, to get to $1,000, you've got to make a salary of about, what, 60? You know, so, that's where, I mean, like you said, it's confusing discussion we're having.
Well, I agree with the ideas of competition and the fear of losing employees, which is why, when I hear the county has given 2.6 percent or 2.7, I heard, but I can't help but think, we're as good as the county, if not better. We ought to be given 2.6 percent across the board.
Well, and my thought process was, you're already, and I don't have the full dollar amount, but I think when you add 1.5 percent plus what we're contributing to balance out the health program for this year, I think you're over 2 percent, which is competitive in what's going on locally. Again, that 2.6 or 2.7 is a conversation, it's not set in stone at this time, but I think it's a fair number.
Let me, I'm not taking a position one way or the other. If you will notice, for every 1 percent in the general funds, $197,000. Go back to the discussion regarding the health insurance. We're putting in over 330...
About 300,000.
Pardon me?
About 300,000.
Okay, 300,000 dollars. So, again, you know, I know that that's spread over funds, and I don't think we have the breakout... and I don't think we have the breakout of that. But let's just assume for the moment that of the 300,000, 200,000 of it's coming from the general fund. I think that's a safe assumption. It may be a little low. What that means is that you've put in 1%. And like I said, I'm not staking territory or trying to, I'm just pointing out from a statistical standpoint, which Gail doesn't like me to do math in public. When you put in $300,000 in your health fund, you are contributing somewhere in the vicinity of whatever number you want to pick, 1%.
And that's what my calculations were. I figured 2.2, but I didn't have the exact number handy when I was doing that. But I think it's competitive, and I think it's fair across the board. I, I'm just not a believer in being self-employed and having done so for so long that you treat certain people different than others. It's not a good message to send to your workforce. I think if you're doing something, it should be equal across the board. And it's not when you're doing it the way that we did it last year. We did it for the right reason last year, and it was good, but I don't think it should be a reoccurring method. Just my opinion. I just think the one and a half percent works, and everybody gets treated fair.
I don't mind the one and a half percent, and the, you know, taking into consideration the healthcare benefits, you know, makes sense. But combining a discussion into, combining the discussion that we're losing people requires a further analysis. And I don't know if this is, gets at that. It requires, who are we losing? What positions? And for what reasons? And I don't know if we can sum that up in...
Well, I'm trying to do that, so I'll clarify that.
And you're right about that. I mean, we've done, we've had, we've paid for studies in the past. We've paid for compression studies. Have we ever, have we ever complied with all the recommendations? I don't think so, but...
I don't know about all, but I thought we made an effort to address that.
I think we put almost $2 million in at that time.
Yeah.
November 2007.
But, but I think it's a con... I think it's a conversation that will need to be had, because you've got, you've got some departments that are losing people, and that at some point in time, we've got to talk about it.
So I'm hearing that you're...
Yes.
Support of the day. You seconded it, right? There is a motion on the, on the table here and a second discussion, any further discussion? I'll make a motion to amend. I can amend.
Oh, okay. What you said? Okay, I'm sorry.
Motion to amend, amend away, sir, to change the one and a half percent to 2%.
What was, we would be involved. What was the amendment? I'm sorry.
One and a half to change it. One and a half percent to 2%.
Well, Mike, Mike has to agree to that, right?
No.
We had to vote on the amendment first, and then...
Second to the amendment. Second to the amendment, though. Is there a second? Our first motion and a second is still out there on the floor. All those in favor? All opposed? So we've settled on the one and a half percent across the board. We're clear on that, right?
At this time, I would like to ask if you have any other questions regarding the budget, because over the next two weeks, we would like to finalize the details and have it for your consideration of adoption on June the 6th. Are there any other loose ends that we have failed to address?
Everything was straightened out as far as the fee schedule, right? There was some type of typographical, or?
Yes, on the, on the fee schedules, I want to make it very clear that we did not change, while we did an excellent job of confusing y'all with all of our redlining, the rental rate, the only place the rental rate changed was at Jack Amiette. And the reason why it changed is because we found you can't rent the gym, and another group rent the front building because of the way the restrooms are set up. So when you rent it, you rent the whole thing. But everything else, and even the fee there, stayed the same. So I hope through that additional email that we straightened that out in our apology for that.
Anybody else have anything pertaining to the budget they want to bring up? Okay, so everybody's fine with putting this on the agenda for what day?
June 6th will be a workshop type.
We'll do a special meeting right after the workshop.
And that's when we'll do it?
Only item, if you normally do it.
That works fine.
Or we could actually do it right here at the...
We can do it right here?
We can do it right here?
It's already set up, recorded. So my question is, when the budget book comes, like on this agenda item, had it reflected all the things we had done in between now and then?
Okay, that's the original implication.
Mayor, before you take a...
The workshop meeting on the 6th is a regular meeting. All of our meetings, the, let me just go over the facts. The workshop that we always have on the first Tuesday after the first Monday, a regular meeting. The workshop you have on the next meeting and the regular meeting, both of them are regular meetings. So we can just add this on to that workshop meeting.
So you don't have to have a special meeting?
We don't have to have a special meeting, and we'll just let you take a specific vote on that. It won't be a consent, so again, you'll just, here at the table, take a vote on, with a motion of second.
Clears up the confusion, then, right?
Yes.
We do have one other item. It should be relatively short, so rather than take a break now, if you don't mind, I'd like to talk for a second and give you an update regarding the conversations we've been having with Holiday City. As, let's see, moving through those things, okay. First of all, Susan Baptist is walking in the door as I speak. I didn't realize that. Susan has been attending the meeting where the city is receiving a grant from Duke Power for $100,000 that will assist us in getting funds to work on the Kerr Street Marina, Riverwalk Marina. So I've modified the presentation a little bit, but before we do this, Susan, will you give them a report about your attendance today at the Duke Power?
I would love to. Amanda, if you would like to, I do feel I might have the award. I've had the pleasure of going to Gastonia yesterday and then being present at the Duke Energy Award for the recipients for the grant that was awarded to us for our efforts at the Riverwalk Marina. So it was very nice. It was, it was, obviously, I give credit to Greg. I apologize. I just ran down the hall. Greg applied and did a great job, and I was lucky to go receive it. So Dr. Woodruff, here is the award, if you'd like to...
Pass that to all the council.
Pass that to the, to council. I believe the artwork there is indicative of all of the different tributaries and watersheds and the rivers and the basins that contribute. So the overall artwork was really neat because you were able to see how it all fits together. So it was a, it was a very nice reception. I was very grateful to receive it on behalf of the city, and there we have it.
And so we have an additional $100,000 that will go to help fund the restoration and rebuilding of the marina. So that will be...
Good job, good job, good job, Greg.
Straight back.
During the rezoning discussions with Holiday City, one of the things that you asked about was, what is the public good? What does the public get from the rezoning? And we discussed at that time the possibility of a public-private partnership that could open up the swimming pool down at the Holiday City or a possible city facility at least portions of the year. So while I've changed some of these, I think Susan will be able to pick it up here and walk you through. The concept, which is just a concept at this point, would be to create a public-private partnership which would open up their existing pool to the public. So Susan?
So, yeah, kept picking up from here. We have done some research. As you all know, the, obviously, Holiday City is off of Corbin Street. It is a residential area, but their pool has done some extensive renovations. It is a nice in-ground pool. It's about 20 by 40 feet. These are pictures. There are different views, but in, within the last year, they've completely repainted and refurbished the pool. This is what it looked like even, what, at least two months ago, six weeks ago. So they, they do a good job with maintenance, and it's a nice, large, good-sized pool. Again, some other pictures. You'll see that this area down here on the, on the left side is, that's a kiddie pool, so it's very shallow. So they have both amenities all within a fenced-off area. So the picture on the right for, as we move forward in the conversation, those are some parking spots that are open to the residents, obviously, for the pool as well, but also to the residents. As we move forward, we'll discuss, you know, parking is going to be a challenge because as you can see, there's not a lot there, but we might have some creative solutions to that, to that challenge. This is based off of discussions on when we might realistically be able to operate the pool. We've put, we've adjusted it recently because this is a new conversation. This is from June 30th to September. That's basically Labor Day weekend, and then operating on a Monday through Saturday from 10 to 4:00. The idea is that we would be closed on Sunday so that their residents can, again, use it, and it's basically for them. So this is with the expectation that we would have two lifeguards on duty that gives each lifeguard opportunities for their breaks and accurately maintain and supervise the pool area in addition to a pool attendant. We would open it up to both residents, obviously, to them and their guests as well. What we're proposing is that we would recover, we would be able to do a, our city, our, our resources would go towards the staffing, and then the lease or the agreement we go into with Holiday City would go to offset the chemical expenses. Those chemical expenses are an average on what they charged all of last year. So we did get a copy of their invoices, and that $5,000 is, give or take, basically, what they, they encumbered last year for chemicals. Because as you can see, they already have some pool rules up. Those are pretty indicative of the state of North Carolina and expectations. We would probably adjust them just a little bit since how it's now, like, you know, during our times, it would be for the city, but... So again, proposing that it would be Monday through Saturday, 10 to 4:00. We have a couple of options, and looking at this opportunity, we could certainly take over the full responsibility of the pool and all of the maintenance. We do have Nick Broniger, who's a certified CPO. He had to do that for the splash pad. So we could do that. We also have the opportunity, it might be easier for us to let them continue. It's their system. They're familiar with it. They know what it takes to run that. And as you've seen in the pictures, they're doing a fine job. So I think option two is really where we would reimburse them, or we would enter into an agreement so that they continue the operations, and we would just maintain the pool aspect of it, where we would have lifeguards. They do not currently have lifeguards, so that's a new one for us. We would staff it and, and just carry it from the operation standpoint. Again, we're looking at $5,000 for chemicals and $5,000 we averaged on his hours, the gentleman that runs it and operates it in the morning, cleans it, and maintains the chemicals and that sort of thing. Again, this is just goes over lifeguards. We estimated a head lifeguard, a secondary lifeguard, and an attendant, and that would be what we're looking at. Obviously, we can look at, you know, what we end up with in our hours and adjusting it as needed. This comes down to our hourly and the breakdown. We're looking at about $12,000, give or take, on what it would cost to staff it with two lifeguards and an attendant. Again, just looking at the total cost to the city for this summer, if we started the week, the last week in June, about 22, 22,000.
Is there a fee associated with this for the swimming?
So we have discussed an opportunity to talk about for revenue.
Go to the next slide.
So we've discussed a revenue, keeping it nominal, keeping it reasonable for our patrons, and just doing a child and adult fee. So you're looking at possibly $1 a child, $2 an adult, and then possibly looking at, you know, ways to group that together, and that would be a total cost of 22,000, I think, is what you've got on there.
Well, the total cost would be 22,000. You can see it'd be offset.
Oh, right.
You know, the, what we, we have no idea what level of participation you're going to have. And one of the great things about this opportunity is you're not investing long-term. You're basically setting up a 10-week pilot program. Now, why did we go to the, you know, the end of June? Well, hard to believe it's the middle of May. When we first started talking about this, we were hoping to, if we got approval and all the lease and everything worked out, that we would open it Memorial Day weekend. But it's only two weeks away, you know? So trying to be realistic, maybe we could open it up by the middle of June, maybe the third week of June, if y'all are comfortable. The point we're making, though, is you hear a lot of discussion in the community about we should have a pool. It's a pretty inexpensive way to find out, are your residents really interested in having a pool? Now, there are a lot of downsides here. First of all, parking's going to be a challenge. On the other hand, we should be interested in walking a little distance to the beach. I mean, the last time we went and I went to the beach, I think we walked about from the parking lot to the sand, at least a quarter of a mile. Well, if you look down the street from this facility, you have what? Northeast Creek. And you have over 70 parking spaces with restrooms right there on Corbin and a sidewalk. So some people will say, well, I'm not going to go because I don't want to walk in hot sun, or whatever. Parking is the challenge.
What about a bus ride?
Well, one of the nice things is, it's right on the bus ride. And there is a drop-off point right at the entrance to Holiday City. So you could get on the bus in Northwoods at the mayor's house and drive all the way on the bus for, Anthony, what's the fee for the bus?
$1.25.
For $1.25. So, but what we're showing you is, if you like the concept, then the city attorney and the, and Susan's folks and I will work further to finalize this and bring it to a lease. It's a pretty inexpensive way, though, to find out, are people going to use it? It's a whole lot less expensive than building a million-dollar pool only to find out that it was a bad investment. But these are all swags. If we wind up with 10 people per day or 300 people a day, the numbers float. So we tried to put in what we would consider to be just nominal numbers. And I think you, if you're going to enter into this, you should enter in on the basis that the fee should be the lowest possible so that everybody is encouraged to come. And you should assume from the beginning, you're going to lose $22,420. You're not going to make a penny. But this is what, in the marketing business, you're called a lost leader. You're trying to find out, is this a product that your clients want?
What were the hours again? You were going to talk about?
10 to 4.
Oh, so it'd be at 4 o'clock, or the lifeguard leaves.
And the pool would close.
Well, I mean, it would be open for their tenants.
Yes. The, the concept, though, from a liability standpoint, is important. And we've discussed this with Holiday City. The attorney pointed out that he has a very nice Speedo bathing suit, was one thing he pointed out. But he also pointed out, from a liability standpoint, you need to physically close the facility so no one's left in the pool when your lifeguards walk out. So Holiday City has agreed that if we move forward at 4 o'clock, the whistle will blow. Everybody is out. Nobody is left in regardless of where they live. The gate will be locked. Their attendant will come out and clean the pool. At 5 o'clock, it will reopen for their citizens, residents only. So that's the reason why we are saying it will close at 4 o'clock.
Will you at least have an out for both sides in case they're overwhelmed? I mean, it's, there is a capacity, I mean, right?
Capacity issue?
There, there definitely is a capacity issue. I do not know the maximum of that, but I'm sure that...
I, I think it's about 45 on the pool itself. So part of the job of the lifeguard is to monitor and rotate out, and, and obviously, come back in two hours. When some people funnel out, a lot of times, people take breaks at lunchtime. And, but yeah, I think it's about 45 for that pool.
Any, is there going to be an out for both sides? In the lease, I'm saying, do they have an out if it's disagreeable to them?
That certainly needs to be part of it. We haven't started drafting a lease at all because, again, I think...
Well, we've shown under the concept.
I mean, I was thinking about them and us. I mean, if we get there and there's two people a day and we're spending...
I'd tell you, bring back, and let you look at the lease and the... That's right. And I'd tell you, bring back and let you look at the lease and approve it.
If we, uh, we overbook the pool, we're not going to forcibly remove them from the pool, right, if we overbook?
We're not, we're not the airlines.
Well, we're going to contact, uh, one of the airline industries.
United would be a good one, yes.
Okay, that was the last one.
But it's just, like I said, uh, they're interested. If y'all are interested, uh, if you're comfortable with us, uh, working out more details and bringing this back on June the sixth for your consideration of adoption.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, yes.
Mayor, that concludes our items.
And have a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Whatever one you want.